I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the rule?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on June 18th, 2018, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? None is their motion to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, I have one item from the Ohio Division of Liquor Controls, an application for a new D-5I liquor permit for Roar QLLC, doing business as Pork Belly Barbecue, at 1616 East Worcester Street. Check of the records was requested and no detrimental information was noted. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. We have no special recognitions this evening, so we will proceed to lobby visitation. Kay, has anyone signed up for lobby visit?
Yes, Erlene Kilpatrick.
In case you're wondering, tomorrow is our Fourth of July holiday celebration on July 3rd, and I want to, I'm sorry, I'm Erlene Kilpatrick, Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce. I didn't get it. I want to give thanks to over 160 donors for this community event, and it's just absolutely phenomenal. It truly is a split between the business community and the residential community who have come out to support this event, so I wanted to say thank you. Don't worry, I'm not going to read all 160 names, but they are available on our website, so please take a moment to check that out. I also want to say that it takes approximately $18,500 to do this event, this community event, and any of the proceeds that we have from this year will definitely be carried over for next year's event, so we're going to hopefully have a nice pool to start with for next year. We wouldn't be able to do this, we as in the chamber, our community as a whole, would not be able to have this event without the support from city administration, the police department, the fire department, Public Works, and of course, we have BGSU to thank immensely for as well. With them, we are involved with the police department, the Milette Alumni Center, the administration, as well as the BGSU athletics to make this happen. I also want to give a special thanks to the Belleville Brothers and their clan, and to the downtown farmer's market for hosting our annual porkaline fundraiser. Despite the heavy rain, there was an awful lot of support who showed up, and at one point, we were handing out, one customer ordered 18 porkalines, just to give you an idea of how well the night was going for us. And then we also want to thank Ziggy's, they hosted a fundraiser for us, and we had celebrity bartenders, and it was Andy New Love, Cal Bowers, as well as Frances Scroochi, who were all there to support the event as well. And again, I just want to say thank you to everyone involved. I'd be remiss if I would not mention the Bowling Green area community bands, they will have their performance at 8:00 tomorrow night at the Milette Alumni Center, and you know, if you're hearing all of this donation, all of these supporters, and it comes back to one more reason why we truly are the best hometown, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Erlene, and thank you for all your hard work as well.
That's all I have.
Very good, let's proceed to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer, and declaring an emergency, and a resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2019.
Thank you, Bruce. We have two ordinances from the Public Utilities Committee, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for tree trimming and removal services, and also an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts with the Village of Portage for wastewater treatment services. We move now to our official reports. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Redder.
Good evening, council. Well, thank you, Erlene, for your kind words about our city staff and their work on the fireworks that also is in my report this evening. We are, of course, very excited to join with the chamber, all of our community supporters, in supporting our fireworks tomorrow evening at dusk, so that's July 3rd at dusk, at the BGSU inter mural fields. We do have a few reminders for folks who are coming out there, so Erlene gets to be the fun, I get to be a little bit of the heavy, but for safety reasons, those attending fireworks should be aware that no sparklers, fireworks, or sky lanterns are allowed on the grounds of BGSU, and also that the stadium is not going to be open this year due to construction by BGSU at the stadium, but of course, there are many, many places to sit, and I know that families often have, families, friends, neighbors, and so forth have areas that they gather, so those will all continue to be accessible. It's great when we all get there, and we get there at different times, and you know, you see kids out playing and so forth, and it's wonderful, but we all then leave the fireworks at the same time, and so there's a lot of traffic associated with that. Our police division does an excellent job of stationing at prime intersections to do its best to keep traffic moving. We ask that folks exiting, please follow the directions of those officers. You may want to go left, because that's the way you usually go home, and they may be directing you right, but often what they're doing are getting people out to the perimeters of the city so that traffic can flow, and we can all get home safely, and then enjoy the Fourth of July holiday with our friends and family. City office buildings will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th. Of course, our safety services, our utilities folks, other folks are, you know, on 24/7, and so they will be working, of course, but should you have business at the city building, please conduct it on Tuesday or Thursday. You'll notice that the staff is a little bit light this evening, so Mr. O'Connell and Mr. Kraft are not here, I can try to answer any questions on their behalf, of course, on the half of the mayor as well, should you have questions.
Do you have any idea what caused the power outage today?
Today?
There was none.
On the west side, I'm not sure, I didn't know there was one today. We can find out and let you know.
I have a question for Brian O'Connell. You may or may not know, in Portage, do we currently take their stormwater, or is it, we do stormwater?
We, we do.
Okay.
Well, oh, their stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's stormwater, it's their sanitary, but we can ask about their stormwater.
There was something in the explanation of the ordinance about anti-degradation policy, and it mentioned stormwater, so.
Okay.
We'll have to check into that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Great, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Are there questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ali.
I can't go two meetings in a row without a report, but I don't have a whole lot, except that the pool will be open on July 4th, but I do want to mention that tomorrow evening, because of the fireworks, we will be closing the pool an hour early at 7:45, so we, the staff likes to go, and we found that pool is pretty dead then, because everybody's heading over to the fireworks, so just be aware of that, just one less hour. Really, we have a lot going on, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but I do want to share, we had a really cool presentation at the pool this morning at about 9:45, and if anybody follows me on Twitter, you know what I'm talking about. No, it's probably been on social media as well, but real social media, not my Twitter, because I tweet maybe once every three months, so, but I did send out a picture. Representative Gavron contacted me on Saturday and had a really cool story that she had heard of, so she wondered if it would be too disruptive to show up to the pool this morning at about 9:45, when the nine o'clock swim lessons ended, and I said, no, absolutely not, once I heard this story. Peyton and Bryant Switzer are currently in our nine o'clock swim lessons, and they were at a hotel pool, I believe, over the weekend, and they're about age six or so, and they actually saved a little toddler girl who fell into the pool, as her mom was getting stuff ready, she kind of wandered off, and, and I don't know whether it was Peyton or Bryant, but one of them immediately, she fell into the deeper area, it's a hotel pool, so it probably wasn't really deep, but the deeper area for a toddler girl, and just sank, and he instinctively went and pulled her up, handed her to his brother, who was at the ladder. At that point, then, their parents, as well as the mom, sort of came over and whatnot, but really a testament to what we're teaching these kids out at the pool. I mean, when we say enhancing lives daily, we truly are. So that was really neat, Representative Gavron showed up in between the lesson shift, and all the guards just stood around, and the boys, of course, I don't think they really understood what the big fancy letter was from the State House, but everybody was cheering for them, and especially their teachers, the lifeguards, which means a lot to them, so it was pretty cool, and I just wanted to share that with you, because it's just one of those moments where it's like, you know, this is why we do what we do, and this is why it's so important, so that was really neat to see. So that's, that's my story, and all our events and stuff are still going on, Lunch in the Park is Friday, we have a concert on Sunday, a little light on our camps this week due to the holiday, but summer is in full swing.
Questions for Kristen.
All right.
Thanks for sharing that story, great story. Mr. Marsh, City Attorney, questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you, that concludes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
The Community Improvement Committee met tonight to discuss potential language to add a statement of nondiscrimination or antidiscrimination to the city charter preamble, so we gathered public input and went through a few different ideas, and decided to shoot for another meeting on the subject to refine some of those ideas, and we're thinking of doing that at 5:00 PM on July 16th, right before the Transportation and Safety Committee meeting.
Work on the calendar, Kay?
Yes, it does.
Very good, if you could just send an email to everybody on council so they could get that, you always do, but just a reminder. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Daniel.
Mr. President.
Your Harold.
I just wanted to take a moment to commend Daniel on his, the meeting that he, that he had, I mean, you were all in attendance, so you saw that it was very productive, it was a good mixture of citizen input and trying to come to a solution, and I just, I'm encouraged by it, you know, you look at national issues and how topics, including this one frankly, can devolve, and I thought it was very productive and logically laid out, and Daniel should be commended on shepherding us through it, as well as the citizens for their demeanor and their positive impact.
Thank you, Bill.
I agree, Bill, thank you. Additional council committee reports. Very good, let's proceed to the reading of legislation.
Excuse me, John, did you want to announce your meeting, your transportation and safety and bicycle safety?
Oh, sorry, Kay, yes.
Okay.
Since it was alluded to, I'm thinking it's a foregone conclusion. Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
As was referred to earlier tonight, or by Daniel, on July 16th, we'll also be having another joint meeting of the Bicycle Safety Commission and our Transportation and Safety Committee. We met about two months ago and had a really good meeting, I feel, with, with the Bicycle Safety Commission. They requested that we again meet to specifically go over the aspects of the cap plan that impact bicycle safety in Bowling Green. So I contacted Daniel and Greg, and I know from the committee that this time will work for them, so we'll be meeting on July 16th at 6:00 PM.
Very good, thank you, John.
Thank you for the reminder, Kay.
True thing.
Excuse me, just a thought, Daniel, and I'm certainly glad to follow your lead on this, but do you think that the council might be able to discuss that charter language in our regular meeting? I mean, we're talking now about three hours of meetings back to back here, just, just think about that a little bit, you don't have to respond now, but just think that might work.
You're suggesting, instead of just having the committee meeting, that we just have a council-wide discussion during the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just think about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3705 for first reading, resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2019. Ordinance Number 8698 for first reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 8699 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for tree trimming and removal Ordinance Number 8700 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts with the Village of Portage for wastewater treatment services. Legislation for second reading, Resolution Number 3704 for second reading, resolution authorizing the City of Bowling Green to participate in the local park improvement grant program, and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application Ordinance Number 8696 for second reading, ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment.
Excuse me, Kay?
Yeah.
That might have been 8695.
Well, I think my numbers might be messed up.
Oh, okay.
So you might be right.
And as, I actually needed to make a clarification on the street cleaning, I just gave the wrong information to a prominent eastside resident shortly before this meeting, it does involve a 2% increase in the assessment.
So then, that was that one, so is this next one 8697, is that right? So ordinance Number 8697 for second reading, ordinance authorizing Municipal Administrator and Utilities Director to sell obsolete items no longer needed for municipal purposes by public auction and declaring an emergency. This we do need to do third reading on, in order, because the auction date is set for July 25th? Yes.
Okay, so first, we need to add the emergency clause?
Need to suspend the rules and give it third reading first.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I propose that we suspend the rules and give ordinance 8697 its third reading.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, Kay, would you please call the rule?
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Motion passes, the rules are suspended for ordinance 8697.
Ordinance Number 8697 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator and Utilities Director to sell obsolete items no longer needed for municipal purposes by public auction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8697.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the rule?
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Motion passes, the emergency clause is approved for ordinance 8697.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8697.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the rule?
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8697 is adopted.
Resolution number, legislation for third reading, Resolution Number 3703 for third reading, resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit laws, as Codified 49 USC, Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas, and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contract or grant for the fiscal year 2019 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and 5339 and/or 5311 funding for capital and/or operating assistance, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to adopt Resolution 3703.
Second. Then moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say I'm happy I only had to read that once. Sorry, Kay.
Very good, Kay, would you please call the rule?
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes, Resolution 3703 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8692 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for professional cleaning services for city-owned buildings.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8692.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the rule?
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8692 is adopted.
And ordinance Number 8689 comes off the table automatically.
Thank you, Kay, is there any discussion on ordinance 8689?
So as it's listed on here, this is the, is this the first draft that Mr. Marsh provided us with?
It's correct.
Yeah.
Is there a second copy, or is there a copy of the second draft available to us? Should we want to substitute?
It was in the pack.
Oh, yes, it was in your pack.
It was in the packet of cases.
What is here? The second one?
Yeah, it's immediately following the legislative letter, should be, the first thing after.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I would like to make a few comments, you know, my initial assessment upon reading the enhanced language we discussed last week was that it was too detailed and a little too limiting, and of course, we had discussion, and I, and I've read the mayor's comments, I've read Dr. Barber's two mails, I've read Chet Marson's letter, John Fawcett's, Gary Hess's, and, and I've reread both proposals, the initial one and the second one that was included with our proposal, and, and my position has not changed. I, I think as a council, we should not be just good stewards of our city charter, but rigorous defenders of its intent and simple but functional structure, and I think we should send charter amendments to the voters that improve the charter, as suggested by the Charter Committee, but not in ways that may unnecessarily burden future generations of citizens, future city councils, future city administrations, but I do applaud the work of the commission. I appreciate Dr. Barber's passion. Many years ago, Dr. Barber and I served together on, on the Planning Commission, and I understand how he feels about planning in this community, but I also believe that we can implement all, that is 100%, of the language proposed by the Charter Committee, but I submit that it's better to amend the charter as originally proposed by creating the Department of Planning, and amend Section 30.86 of the Administrative Code to include all of the language proposed by the Charter Committee. I think there are benefits to this approach, by including the proposed language in an ordinance, it can become law quickly, we can have complete control over the outcome. The proposed charter amendment may or may not be passed by the voters, and this approach recognizes the work and recommendations of the Charter Committee, and the Administrative Code can be amended as the needs of the city require and change. The charter, of course, can only be amended by a successful ballot issue, so specifically, I propose approving the original language created that creates Section 6.09 of the city charter, I mean, pass, there's one copy for each of you and one for Kay, I'm handing out, and amending Section 30.86 of the Administrative Code, as shown in this draft, I'm handing you a draft where I made a stab at what an amended section of the Administrative Code would look like, and that's in the second part of that package, it's done and tracked changes, so you can see what I've added, but I, I propose this, and again, every word, every phrase that was suggested by the Charter Commission is in this proposed amendment to, to the Administrative Code, and I think that this, this gets us where we need to be and protects the integrity of the charter, but after I was reviewing all of this, it occurred to me, I was thinking about the role of the Planning Commission in, in strategic planning for the city, and I also recommend that at a later date, and not certainly today, that we review Section 30.106 of the Adminis, of the Code, which deals with the Planning Commission, and consider amending that section to better define and perhaps even expand the description of the Planning Commission's duties and their role in strategic planning for the city, because that body is, is integrally and should be involved in planning, and I don't think that came up in the discussion at all to this, to this point, but I think that's something that we should, that we raise, so in, in any case, I will, that, that's my proposal. So just to restate and clarify, the question was asked earlier, what, the, the version of the, of the ordinance is on the table right now, or removed from the table and is up for discussion, is the original language that the city attorney prepared, correct? We haven't substituted, am I remembering?
That's correct, that's correct. So just to be clear, your proposal is that we would consider approving the legislation as it exists today?
Yes.
Which was Mr. Marsh's original language, and then a subsequent piece of legislation would be developed, and we would then insert into the Administrative Code the suggestions that you have included in this draft, which just at quick glance appears to be almost word for word, the wording that was included in, in Mr. Marsh's second draft, which was intended to be more inclusive and more closely represent what we thought was the, the intent of the Charter Review Commission.
Correct, the only change I made was from some passive to active voice, but the words are all the same.
Okay.
And of course, it's a draft, I can, please, please.
Just to make things clear again, would you tell us what we would be voting upon here, right now, taking out the part about including an ordinance that would revise Section 6.09, let's not talk about that right now, what are we going to be voting on regarding the Charter Amendment, what are you proposing we vote on again, to be clear?
Do you want to answer that?
We would be voting, Sandy, on the, on the wording, on the legislation was the, that was originally created by Mr. Marsh.
Which is?
Which is the legislation that just came off the table.
Yeah, okay, so you're not recommending the amended version that Mr. Marsh also prepared and was sent out to city council to review?
That's.
That is not here.
That's. I am not.
You are not, okay.
I am not, what I'm proposing is we approve this, which would take the discussion of the, the second version of it off, out of discussion, and with the understanding that I would move forward with this, with Mr. Marsh, so that at our next meeting, we would have a first reading on an ordinance that would look like that or as close to that as, as legally required.
And I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Greg, I, I guess I'm not having an explanation as to why you would want Mr. Marsh's first draft and not his amended draft put in the charter.
Because I believe it's too limiting and, and too lengthy.
The second one he did was too?
Yes, the second one is includes the additional language, which is a language, again, that's been reproduced and.
Okay.
It's the lang, it's, Kay sent it out, the second version.
I did, yeah, I did find when she said where it was, I was looking too far back.
Okay, but yes, I believe that that is, that's too many limitations on, on the charter, but it's, it's a valid issue, I mean, the points raised are valid, they're important, and I, I think we'd get better use out of them, from a legal standpoint, we can make this law very quickly, three readings and a vote, it goes into, we don't need the, we don't need a ballot issue, all of the concerns are now part of our, would then be part of our code, and with the advantage that they could be changed and amended as needed moving forward without, without a referendum, and we still create the Planning Commission within the charter as suggested by the Charter.
I mean, if you're concerned about the voters rejecting this, we could always just, like, if they like, if they were to reject this at the ballot box, we could then pass an ordinance after that.
Well, again, I say that that's a possibility, but that doesn't change my position. I think that the first language is better than the second.
Well, I understand that, yeah.
That's why I'm, but I'm saying it's not bad language. I'm just saying it's misplaced. It's perfectly good. It's valid. Every word is important. It raises important issues concerning planning for the city. I support it. I just support it in an ordinance rather than in a charter.
Mr. President?
You're here.
So it appears that the direction we're going for the votes on this would be if there is a motion to amend by substitution, in other words, substituting what was given to us, Mike's second revision is what we've been referring to. So if we make a motion and it's seconded to amend it, then that vote would put that language on the ballot for the voters to decide.
Correct.
If we vote to amend by substitution and that motion does not pass, then we're back to the original wording, which Greg's been alluding to, and then we can vote on that, either pass it or not. And that would be the proper sequence.
I'm gonna have to ask for, you know, Mr. Marsh on that.
First of all, there's no motion on the table right now.
Yeah, there is no motion on the table.
No, no, I'm saying, that's why I'm laying it out, that. That's true. If that happens, then there's a subsequent motion to amend. Wouldn't that take precedence? Mr. President, I move that we amend proposed ordinance 8689 by substitution. That way, we can talk about it and go forward.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I've been talking to a few people involved with the charter process and some interested citizens, and debating with them a little bit, should this be in the charter or the Administrative Code? I think one of their points was that in the administrative, in the charter, it gets a little more attention, a little more prominence, that they thought that was an important aspect of it. It seems that putting Mr. Marsh's first stab at it in the charter, it gives it the prominence that some folks think is important. I had to think a little bit about why should it have more prominence than, say, public works or planning, or, excuse me, than parks and rec, or than personnel for that matter? And for a long time, I didn't think it should have more prominence. I didn't think there was any reason for that. But just actually, just today, I thought, one thing that planning needs is, that it doesn't have is these concrete things that people can just look at and they know that they're happening. If we have good parks, everybody knows that. If our sewers don't work, everybody knows that. If we don't do good planning, nobody knows that till way too late. So that made me think it is valuable to get people to think about planning and whoever happens to look at the charter and think, yeah, that is an important function. So I now like the idea of saying something in the charter about it. I really like what Greg has come up with because I have not liked all those details being in the charter. They just, that's not the right place for them. So get them in the Administrative Code. I like that approach.
I'm gonna echo Bruce's thoughts before we vote on this, just going back to Greg's proposal. Quite frankly, up until recently, I have been generally not supportive of including either version into the charter, simply because I didn't feel it was necessary. I think that there's a great awareness of planning with council today, current administration, and I think that it just is, was not necessarily necessary to attach it to the charter just to try to bring it up in prominence, you know, in our local government. Having said that, I do think that Greg's proposal really represents a fair compromise. I could live, I think, with the language in the original proposal that is less descriptive, and I would very much support the notion of including the more descriptive language in the Administrative Code. I just think that's a very good approach, gives us a lot more flexibility to amend that job description via ordinance in the future as opposed to a referendum of the voters. And again, I think it's a fair compromise. So I'll be voting no to amend by substitution, simply for that reason, because I'm just at this point more comfortable and willing to compromise at this point to revert back to the, or to stay with the original language.
Mr. Chairman? I'm going to support the second version of Mr. Marsh's draft because I have talked with everyone that Greg has already mentioned, and in addition, I have heard from, I've talked with the two chairs of the Planning Commission, who have indicated to me that the spirit of the commission is best represented in Mr. Marsh's second draft. Additionally, the mayor wrote, and we all have it in writing, that he likes Mike's second draft. He prefers Mike's second draft. So I'm going to add that I'm sitting here and I'm looking at three people, one, two, three, four people that are on the commission that have told me they prefer the second draft. We gave this to the commission to do with what they thought was best. The mayor thought the second draft was best, and I see no problem putting it in the, putting it in the charter in as much as I can possibly conceive that this would pass and we would ever want to take out the provisions that draft number two say the Planning Commissioners shall be in charge of. And it's basically planning for the future. That's what it rolls up. And so I am going to support the amended version.
Mr. President? I know there's been a lot of looks of confusion in the room. I think the mayor actually supports Mike Marsh's first draft, as I remember his email. But with all due respect, I am certainly going to support the amendment or the amending by substitution. There's been emails in the last two weeks, you know, supporting or arguing with including a greater language or including language that is, that we were attempting to amend, this more detailed description of planning. That's what I support, and that's what the commission supported. The arguments that I've heard against including it really boil down to that this violates the purity of the document, and I don't wrap around that argument. I don't think that that's true. I don't think that it's limiting. It's not a job description. It's just basically an underlining of the importance of these activities. It's not a job description. I don't think anyone is going to look at this that has a job and operate simply by these words. These words, again, are to underline what should be an important concept moving forward for Bowling Green. But I do want to clarify that the mayor, I think, disagrees with that. But, you know, to me, the arguments against including this have mostly been to maintain the purity of the document, and to me, that's an insubstantial reason to not underline the importance of this.
Speaking for myself, you know, I think we've had a lot of conversation, not just now, but in the past as well, about the purity of the charter. And while I agree that we should keep it as streamlined as we can, at the same time, I kind of have to think that, like, consequences should matter more than the structure of the document. So if by changing the charter with this amended language can have a greater impact on people's quality of life, then I think that matters more. And, you know, so I think one of the issues that we've had when we've had, you know, some back and forth between us and the residents is that, you know, some permanent residents have come out and they've said that this is important because planning has really been at the center of the, what I would argue has been the greatest problem based in Bowling Green for decades, and that's the quality of life in our neighborhoods, specifically the East Side of town, but that has already started negatively affecting the West Side of town. And so the thing is, is that while everybody here on council might care about planning, and while the mayor cares about planning, while our staff today cares about planning, I do think that it's clear that in past decades, that some officials have not felt the same sense of urgency as we do. And if anybody questions that, then they can revisit the land use update, which spells that out. So I think we need to make that point. So even if we care a lot about planning, and even if we're sensitive to the issues affecting our neighborhoods, that doesn't mean that our successors will be. I think we need to note that. So my understanding of the arguments in favor of this is that this will do some good to prioritize planning, particularly with respect to our neighborhoods, so that this kind of thing doesn't keep happening, and it doesn't happen again. And that's why I'm gonna support it.
Mr. President?
You're here.
A few comments, first of all. Greg's approach is sound. It boils down, if I can, at the risk of oversimplifying, it boils down to a weight between an emphasis of the planning function and a desire to clarify it and bring it into the forefront, kind of what Daniel mentioned, and also keep the charter uncluttered. And both of those are worthy goals. So it's a question of balancing which one may be more important than the other in this particular case. When the Charter Review Commission's initial wording went through, I was concerned about the phrasing and whether it would pass legal muster. And so what Mike Marsh did, and I appreciate it, is he took that wording and refined it so that it would pass legal muster and made it more concise. And that's what we have as our amended by substitution version. The amended by substitution version is a refinement of what originally had come forward. And I think it, for me, it satisfies the concern I had about it being wordy and not necessarily being really copacetic with respect to a legal document. So that's, those concerns are allayed. So from my standpoint, valid arguments to vote yes or no. It has to do with balance. In this case, I want to err on the side of emphasizing planning. And what we're doing here is more exactly following what the Charter Review Commission had recommended and putting it to a vote of the people. And so for those reasons, I think either way, whether the amendment passes and, but the original legislation does pass, either of those scenarios, we're in a better place. But I think we're in that much more of a better place if the amended version does pass.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
And just to be certain, we are voting on the amended?
Amendment.
Yes.
Osbacher?
No.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
No.
Robinette?
No.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8689 is amended by substitution. Do you want to do that? Go ahead.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hill.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8689 as amended by substitution.
Second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
No.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
No.
Robinette?
No.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8689 is adopted. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none is there, a motion for adjournment.
Some move?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We are adjourned. I thank you all for the very civil and appropriate debate this evening. Very, very.